Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 12th, and the time is 6:37 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up is the recognition of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients.
So, as we have done annually for the past few years, we did invite recipients of this year's senior class who received the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Unfortunately, none of the recipients were able to make it tonight. We also did have a breakfast at the school this morning to honor them. So, it was, all the students were there except for one, I believe, and a few of their parents were there as well. So, they did get some recognition, but I do want to just read up their names. Zachary Auclair, Isabella Bumgardner, Chloe Castro, Ciara Shearest, Rea Gagnon, Nicholas Grandmont, Peyton Justin, Cindy Cusamo, Sarah Lassard, Tia Looney, Thomas Merced, Corey Rondo, and Philip Silchuk. So, just want to congratulate those students for their performance. It is connected, it's a merit-based scholarship, connected to performance on MCAS. And these students can use a scholarship for four years to any state school. So, it's quite the scholarship, and we're really proud of the students who earned it. And we're sorry they couldn't be here with us tonight, but wanted to recognize them regardless.
Excellent. Congratulations to those students. Next up is our consent agenda. First is minutes from November 28th, 2023. Has everyone had a chance to look at them? Okay, any questions or comments?
Just a minor thing. My name is misspelled under the Adjorned Work Groups Next of Policy.
Okay.
It's misspelled in the most common way, so it's understandable.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll take the motion with the amended spelling.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 28th, 2023, with the amended spelling.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Next is warrants 0034 and 0036. Any questions or comments? So, one thing in, oh, it's in the wrong folder. Sorry, it's not November, it is December. All right, December 12th. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant 34 and 36.
Hold those, oh, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Next is visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. Do we have any visitors? We do not. Student representative, none here. New business, pupil services. Megan.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you guys doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thanks for having me. You should have a pupil services update in your school committee folder. Just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on how things are going and a few of the different areas that I oversee. Of course, let me know if you have any questions. So, just, we've had some different needs this year. We're still feeling some of those effects from the pandemic, of course. And so, you know, our needs continue to rise as we kind of get to know our students' population for the year. So, last year, when we approved the budget, we approved a point, we had a 1.8 English Language Learners teacher positions. At the beginning of this year, we started off with that, and we've been making some good progress. But we've identified that some of those students really do require more consistency. And so, and we've also had a change in staffing. We did lose that 0.8 staff person. So, we're, you know, looking to make that 1.0 position for the remainder of this year to allow for that consistency, to help work with some of our newly identified preschoolers that are, and have better collaboration with those families. And so, you know, what's nice is that we believe this won't have any increase in our budget at this time, but would significantly help support those students. So, that's just one thing that I wanted you guys to be aware of. And then also, as you recall, last year, we did the Office of Language acquisition. We had one indicator that we had to do, like, kind of correct some action work on around our SEI endorsement. And we were, you know, submitted those things, and we were able to close that out very quickly, actually, at the beginning of the year. So, that is all tied up. All that tiered focus monitoring is all set. So, it's nice to not have that happening this year. I do know there are some changes on the horizon for future. Yeah, they're going to call it something else. But I think I'll get another year to kind of wait and see and get some more training on what the new plan is for that. So, that's kind of our English Language Learner update right now. There's more students, I think, that we're monitoring, you know, overall. And that caseload just kind of continues to creep up year over year. Any questions about that? So, special education, that is another area where we've seen some pretty, like, moderate significant growth in the number of students that we're serving. Pre-pandemic, the district had about 130 to 140. And right now, we're sitting at 170 students. So, the last four years have really made, you know, there has been a lot going on. We're seeing a lot of, we're still recovering from the learning loss. And, you know, students are still struggling. And the other thing that we're noticing is we're seeing a lot of young students coming through that were, you know, infants during the, during the, like, big part of the pandemic. So, they're coming through our preschoolers, preschool, from early intervention. But sometimes not. Sometimes the parents are just getting referred by the pediatrician, and they haven't had the same access to supports and services that could help them. So, we're really trying to monitor that. And we've already seen some increases in, like, the types of support we need, especially around students who, you know, have limited communication needs or behavior or social-emotional challenges. So, we're really looking at the rest of our, like, starting this year, but then even going into next year. Like, you're probably going to see, like, within that budget, like, things that will better support that population of students as well. Because that is where, I mean, we've been talking about that for a while. And so, just making sure that we're keeping you guys informed on kind of like where we're seeing those types of challenges. Staffing, oh, sorry, any questions about that?
So, I'm just reading through this. And so, at the end of the 2022-2023 school year, you had approximately 164 students and 12 graduates. Were those graduates?
They were part of the 164.
No, so what I'm wondering is, did they actually graduate the school or do they graduate the program?
They graduated from school.
Okay. I just was trying to clarify that for myself. And then you look at 12 out of 57, that's a pretty high percentage also. It's like, wow. You know, puts it in perspective a little bit, you know?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, you know, the other thing that we, that have been working on a lot this year is just meeting all of our staffing needs. We've had some transitions in paraprofessionals, you know, trying to maintain that. We've been working on using our, you know, getting more RBTs, or Registered Behavior Technicians, to support the population of students that we're seeing. You know, and that's, there's going to be those things too. One thing that we start off the year not having was a speech therapist at our junior, senior high school, but we were able to make some quick moves and get services delivered through a couple contracts. And, you know, starting in the new year, we'll actually have an SLP three days a week. But we're still looking to fill kind of that other portion of that role, which was providing some, like, reading support for our upper elementary, our upper-level students, junior, senior high school students. We've been able to do some of that work internally through some coverage. But we're, you know, we would like to have someone, you know, in that position who can kind of continue for the long term. So, that is probably been the most, probably the most challenging position because they're often hard to find, the speech therapists. Let's see, we had a new OT start when our OT, our OT assistant retired. And that was also a change to have a more highly qualified person who can take their own caseload, do evaluations, and meet the needs of the students rather than having the, to the OT supervise our assistant. So, that happened at the end of October, but that was anticipated earlier in our budget last year.
I talked about preschool, you know, already a bit. And then I wanted to put on your radar, you know, some unanticipated costs that might be coming. We are, you know, two of the biggest drivers of those types of things are unanticipated placements, where students need something that we can't provide in our district. And then transportation, special transportation. You know, while there are things still being kind of worked out right now, it's too early to tell at the moment. I anticipate I'll have some more information down the road, but just know that, like, we may have some costs that we don't, we haven't anticipated in our budget. That being said, we do also have some additional funding sources that we did not anticipate last year. So, we're going to see how things kind of balance out when, you know, we have more clear answers around student placements and how much transportation will cost for those students. And then we'll kind of be able to consolidate. I'll work with Todd on that a little bit more to get that in. Right now, we're in a really good place. But, you know, until that kind of everything kind of lays itself out, then we'll have some, so we'll have some more things to talk about, probably, in that area.
Yeah, and I think Megan and I talk daily, and Todd and I, and Todd and Megan are talking daily. And I think, like, one of the things that we talk about in these out-of-district scenarios is, like, what is that kind of breaking point? Like, because we're really working to maintain students in district, but like, at what point have we now dedicated more staff, more resources than we anticipated? And it starts to feel like, okay, maybe at the out-of-district, right? Are we working too hard with what we have to say? Like, squeeze this round peg into this square hole? And in some ways, that is part of the puzzle every student presents. But these more challenging cases, I think, we're constantly saying, like, what's the impact it's having on our staff? What's the impact on school culture and climate? What's the impact on that individual student and their family? So, there's just so many layers that go into this. And I think Megan and her team do a good job of considering that. And I think Megan, sometimes, is like, is it at that point, right? Because she knows, because her and I talk about it all the time, about the budgetary constraints that we're working under. And we want to work within what the town has been able to provide, but also recognizing individual needs might kind of change. Or we might be uncovering them because a lot of this is in our younger grades, where we're starting to see it, with students where we might not have had as much of a relationship. Or they're coming under circumstances that we didn't expect. You know, being placed in a home in Granby or moving into town or things have shifted in their own personal life, so it's had an impact on them. And it's just, you know, I think the team does a really good job of being thoughtful about that. And then I think Megan does a good job of thinking through, if now is the time, what's the most appropriate next step? What does that look like? And I think we all recognize the challenges that come with that for those students.
Yeah, so, the next, I just really kind of expands a little bit. I think Todd may have shared some information in a previous meeting about some of the funding sources we've received that we weren't anticipating at the end of last year. You know, we received some more funding in IDEA. So, we were able to, you know, we had some paraprofessional needs that we were able to, you know, use some of those grant funds to support in preschool and, you know, as these students are coming in, giving them what they need and using funds for that. In addition to what we had already projected, we also received more funding in Circuit Breaker. And we haven't, we haven't allocated any really of that quite yet, but we are, you know, anticipating that that will be a funding source we'll go to if and when we have to make, you know, have to fund some of those unanticipated costs. Steve also just alerted me to the supplemental budget, where we're still waiting to hear a little bit more. It seems like there might be even more funding coming our way, but we don't have a real clear sense of how much and when we'll receive it. So, I'm sure we'll be able to update you guys on that down the road when there's like a webinar or something coming up, so we can have more information there. And then lastly, we received some funding through the IEP grant, which is the new IEP that will be implemented in Granby in the 24-25 school year. I also, so we received a little, you know, a little over $11,000 for training for our staff. And we've actually started doing some training. We have a couple, Train the Train, we did Train the Trainer. And then we've been, you know, slowly but surely, like, working through the new IEP because it is different than the previous one in both, like, structure, but also, like, it's going to change some of the practices that we're doing to support kids. And it really lends itself to being a more equitable and supportive IEP for students. It makes so many things clear that haven't been as clear in the last, you know, the last IEP has been around for probably about 20 years now. I did put a link in there, so you can link to Desi's page if you're interested in learning more about that. But we'll have, you know, that will be something that we're going to continue to work on with our staff and share more information with families and, you know, students too, down the road.
So, as Megan kind of said at the onset, she spoke at this meeting, or December meeting last year, was regarding the tiered focus monitoring. So, we felt like it made sense to bring her back to give kind of State of the Union and Pupil Services because a lot runs through Pupil Services. And I think, you know, obviously, she's given some information about this year, but also, we are forecasting a bit, looking forward to FY '25 and how some of these things could impact our budget. Both, we might get some more money through Circuit Breaker and things like that. But, you know, costs don't seem to be going down anywhere, even though inflation is now 1% and not 9%, even though it doesn't seem like we're feeling like we're saving anywhere. You know, and it's just, there's a lot to consider, especially thinking about some of these students in pre-K or K programming and long-term impact to the district for making some of those decisions. But also recognize, we have to look out for those individual needs. So, we wanted to provide that, a little bit of a heads-up about things that could be coming. But I think this is a really good glimpse as to why there's a lot of bills in the Senate and House right now around changing formulas for special ed funding and things like that because, you know, the formula right now just is not working for the cost of special education and other things related to pupil service. And that's not Granby-specific. And I think the challenge is, in a district like Granby, like many other districts, a lot of that cost is falling on the town because the state formula is not picking up enough. So, it'll be interesting to see how things play out as the Senate and House go back into session after the new year. But, yeah, there's, there's a lot to consider when you're considering funding for special education and everything related to pupil services.
I just wanted to add, just because, for anybody who's like watching, we, there is, there's an update for just a training, for basic rights training for, from the CPAC, actually, in the Hatfield Public Schools. But they were gracious enough to share that opportunity with us as well around the basic rights for evaluation and eligibility. It's on January 17th from 6:00 to 8:00, and it's virtual. And they can, anybody who wants to register for that can sign up. There should be links in both the East Meadow and the Junior-Senior High School, like, principal updates. So, that's where you could look for that.
Does anyone have any questions or thoughts for me at this time?
The other thing I'll just mention, Megan, Todd and I talk a lot about, how the best way to share this information because I think our day-to-day, the work is so fluid, but the numbers aren't, right? The numbers that are decided on and voted on are not fluid, but these things happen fast. So, we want to make sure you guys have a bit of an idea about things that might be coming up. Even if they may not happen, we can always circle back to them. If things change, either I can report out, share it in the update, have Megan come. And for some things, if we're going to have to go above and beyond our budget, if Megan has been able to identify something through additional Circuit Breaker, we would have to come for a vote to you on those things too. So, we're just, we're trying to juggle all of those things. But really, our intent is to make sure that you're informed. And if you have questions or concerns, certainly happy to always hop on a call. I'm sure Megan would be willing to do the same if that would be helpful. But just doing our best to keep you all informed and the public informed about what's happening in our schools.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Megan.
Of course.
It was a great update.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So, I haven't heard from Graham. Let me just check my email, make sure that I didn't miss something. He said he would be here, and he mentioned it last night. So, I don't know if he's just running late or... So, we can move ahead to enrollment dashboard and circle back if he ends up coming up. I don't know if he will or not at this point, so... So, enrollment dashboard.
So, enrollment dashboard, I'm happy to give you all a minute or two to take a look.
Want to share this screen?
We are, I mean, big picture. If you have specific questions, happy to entertain them. We are, at the end of, at the end of November, up to 716 students from 711 at the end of October. And that was six students coming in and one student leaving. I'm going to misspeak if I do this off the top of my head, but I know. We had two school choice in, yep, two schools choice in, one new pre-K enrollment, two new enrollments who had relocated into town, and one student returned from a charter school. Unfortunately, the one that left went to a charter school. So, gained a net of one back from the charter school. But we had two return and one go out.
And then we're also just temperature checking October and September, right? Because we haven't looked at this.
Yeah. But, I mean, overall, we're up, so...
Right, yes. Now, the last time we really looked at this, do we need to do any adjustments to our school choice numbers for people coming in? Or we, the people that have left have not gone to any of those areas with seats that needed to be opened or...
We haven't had, I think we had that one question early on about opening up a single seat, which we did. But school choice, we've started to get some inquiries about next year already. You know, we did get two school choice students in in the month of November, but it's definitely more of a, like, a trickle than a steady stream.
Right, which is, I mean, totally, totally fine. I was just wondering, because we had been looking at that, you know, we hadn't looked at it in a while. So, I didn't know with any of the movement if that allowed us to open a seat.
Yeah, and I think we're getting to the point in the year where the conversation might be, do we continue to bring school choice in? Right, again, school choice is so complicated because there's so many layers to it that, right, you're accepting students based, sight unseen, really, based on an application that they fill out. And sometimes those students come with needs that force us to shift more resources in a direction. Sometimes they're leaving their home district because of an issue that they may have caused or they may have had. So, you know, some districts, and we have left kind of school choice open as long as the seats are open. Other districts have talked about kind of closing it out at a mid-year point and just... So, I don't know how much into that conversation we need to get. Again, I think school choice, you guys have, like, I think, voted, your responsibility is every year to vote on whether we're going to participate in school choice. And we've kind of gone above and beyond on that. And I think taken a really intentional approach, which I think has been helpful for us in the past couple of years. So, I don't know if that's a conversation that people want to have or... And I'm not saying it's a need right now, but, you know, I think sometimes we look at, sometimes you get one student in. Not all acceptances are created equal, right? Like, sometimes you get a student in and you may not recognize that student even showed up. Like, they just kind of come in and go with the flow. Sometimes you get one student in, you're like, it's only one student that came in, right? And that's just the nature of dealing with young people. But, yeah, so, and people are choosing different, that's the thing with school choice. They're choosing districts for all different reasons. Sometimes it's, they want to be in that district. Sometimes it's, they don't want to be in their district. Sometimes they feel like they've worn out their welcome in their district. Sometimes it's, they don't feel their district can meet their needs, so they're trying somebody else. So, I think it's not as easy as pinpointing an issue. Or I think we've been really cautious about it and thoughtful about it. And I think as long as we continue to do that, then we'll be in a good place. But, yeah, I don't think at this point there's a need to open more seats because we haven't seen many, like, significant changes in any grade level where it's, like, oh, let's open up some more to fill those seats.
Okay, that makes sense. Any other questions or comments on the dashboard? All right. Oh, do you have one? No? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move... Hearing none, we'll move on to first read of Policy A.
So, I, I don't know how much people have had the chance, which is why we have this on for a first read. So, the Subcommittee has worked on this for the past month and a half or so, went through all of Section A, had some questions, made some edits, used MASC to bring it up to date, also used MASC to generate some of the questions that were asked. So, there have been some additions. Any changes or additions are highlighted in yellow. And we have also consulted with our attorney on some questions. I know Jill brought it up at the last meeting. We had some questions about, is there something specific related to a SORI that should be included? And, um, our attorney went through and added SORI in places here, but said, there's no need for a specific policy, just continue to follow all your legal requirements. So, um, we also updated, I'm not gonna remember, AD, the educational philosophy, I think, tell me if I'm wrong, Jill, what we had originally in there was some template language from MASC. So, we've actually added the mission and vision of the Granby Public Schools, so that policy is aligned with the Granby Public Schools specifically. Let's see, I think the first change is probably page 16 or 17, and then there's a couple more. The SORI stuff is in that next section, page 18 through... And then there was one other section.
The very last one?
That was added.
Which was AE.
AE. And AE, Commitment to Accomplishment, is not a section that the Granby Public Schools has had previously. But it, there is an MASC policy in speaking with our attorney, again, a place where there's no legal requirement, or legal expectation, or reason why we would have to add this policy. But, um, I think to continue to try to align with what MASC is defining as best practice in this, we have included it here. And again, to just remind everyone, the idea here is to try to get through all the sections. So, now we have an approval date for the section, rather than individual pieces within each section. And I know that might only last for a couple of months, because a new A section could very well come out, but, um, I think sometimes we get asked about, oh, when was it approved? So, trying to go through and approve each section as a whole is the task that we've taken on.
Yeah, and I think the only other piece to kind of think about is just the formatting in terms of the potential page numbers attached at the top. And, you know, certainly if we choose to, you know, keep AE and, and those pieces, like, that'll just shift. And some of them I think are correct, and then some of the page numbers with the index or whatever it is will have to adjust.
Yeah. The other thing too, I just want to note that Jackie has started to doing, which I think has been helpful for me at least. Just trying to find an example. I know there's an example in here, because I just saw one. So, on page 12, A B C A, A C A B R, which is our sexual harassment policy for sexual harassment against employees. So, at the top, the title now is a hyperlink, so it takes you to a page that is just that section within A. So, eventually each section, subsection within A will have its own hyperlink with an up-to-date policy too. So, when we're looking for that individual policy, we can pull it that way. So, it's just another way to organize it.
So, um, we'll put it on for a vote for next time, unless you guys want to go through two reads, but you guys have done, you've done most of the pre-work, so, um, read it, questions to Jill and George, and if not, we'll have the vote for next time, if that's agreeable. Any question or comments before we move on? All right, do you want to see if that was Dylan?
Sure.
Is there something in the call that you've been having?
No.
No? Okay. Hey Dylan, how's it going?
Good, yourself?
Pretty good.
So, if you don't mind, I'll just try to set the stage for
Sure.
this vote. So, um, originally, I believe it was our November 1st meeting, the School Committee approved a co-op for indoor track between South Hadley and Granby. In that meeting, I know there was a question to me that asked about the configuration of that indoor track team. Would it be a 7 through 12, or a 9 through 12? My response at that time was that it would be a 9 through 12, because typically it goes through the host school's configuration. So, we voted on that, that night. Since then, indoor track has started, and they, the, South Hadley is the host school, they had low numbers, and, so, the, South Hadley AD reached out to Dylan about the potential for 7th and 8th graders to participate. I don't want to speak for Dylan, but he said, I don't have a problem, but we need to go through the waiver process. So, the ADs met the athletic directors in, it's PVIAC, PVIAC, Pioneer Valley Interscholastic Athletic Conference, something thereabouts. They had their monthly meeting last Wednesday, and the waiver was approved at that meeting. So, we know that there were some things that were put on social media, inviting Granby students to participate, which we started to hear pretty quickly, like, there was some backlash on, some questions around. And, so, we hit pause on that fairly quickly and said, we're gonna bring it back here, because the intent of that vote on November 1st was a 9 through 12 co-op. Dylan was supportive of hitting pause on that, and, you know, he certainly has some more information. And, our goal is to say, one, to procedurally bring it back to the committee. It is an opportunity for our 7th and 8th graders to participate. We also want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about maintaining a good relationship with South Hadley, because I know there were some questions about South Hadley 7th and 8th graders. So, we just felt like this was an opportunity to have the discussion and kind of figure out next steps from here. And I don't think I missed anything, but if I did, please let me know. No?
Questions? I was looking around, see if anyone had questions or comments.
Did I miss anything, Dylan?
No, no, I, I think you, the important stuff you nailed on, and the timetable of when we met and when we were asked. So, they started the season, they were gonna wait to see what their numbers were, before they wanted to see if we, if our 7th and 8th graders could help fill out the rosters. So...
Can you speak to why it was only Granby 7th and 8th graders?
So, my understanding is Eric went to the middle school to ask about people that were interested, and there did not seem to be any interest from their middle school students when he was, you know, he, he shows up, I guess, two or three times a year and talks about the different upcoming sports, and there was not a big interest in indoor track.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
And the waiver submitted through the host school, or through both?
Yeah, well, yeah, so, just like any, the co-op itself, we have to be invited by the school. The school has to reach out, say, we don't have enough numbers, we're under the MIA numbers, would you guys like to join? To try to, you know, meet those numbers, and then, from there, they, yeah, they're the ones that say, all right, would you 7th and 8th grade want to join as well? And, I know Eric had mentioned us being a 7th through 12, it kind of made sense to just try to bring everybody on with that opportunity after it was approved, 9 through 12.
Excellent. Any questions or comments, or anything on this? All right, hearing none, do we want, I'll take the motion to amend our vote for the co-op to include 7 through 12? Or to include the 7th and 8th graders to make it 7 through 12? That's what I meant.
So, who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay. There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Dylan.
All right. Here, Superintendent reporting.
I am the superintendent.
Yes, you are.
So, I just want to report out, I, I know some people may watch both the Select Board and School Committee, and we were gonna talk about this a little bit with our liaison. And I included it in our update last week, but Jen and Jill and I attended last week's Select Board meeting, and Jen spoke at the meeting, at the meeting, really with the intention to clarify the intent of the letter that the Select, the School Committee had sent the Select Board on November 17th. And to try to, I think, address some misperceptions or miscommunications that were shared at the Select Board's November 20th meeting. And I thought Jen was really clear, she did read the letter into the record. It was really clear about the reason why the School Committee had sent that letter, looking for some information. And I think if I can boil it down, and try to put it in a nutshell, which I'm not always good at, is that, like, the School Committee wants to be in a position to move forward as soon as possible, if and when the town is able and willing to support a project at Granby Junior/Senior High School. So, the intent was to say, if there are questions about what it would take to make the junior/senior high school compliant with ADA codes, can we have a list of what that would be? Can we start to look for associated costs for those things? Not looking for a $3 million study, not looking for a feasibility study. I think in her comments, Jen said something along the lines that, I don't think the School Committee members would support a $3 million study at this point. So, I do think it turned into a pretty good dialogue. There was representation from the Finance Committee there as well. In the end, and Jill, Jen, if you think it was more than this, the, the big takeaway was that the Select Board was going to ask the town administrator to speak to the building inspector, to see what, if that's something that they would be able to do, to come in, do a walk through the building, essentially create a bulleted list of things that would need to be done to make it compliant. And then a potential next step would be, maybe it's Todd and I, or representation from the School Committee going out and try to get some quotes or ideas on what those things would cost, so that if and when a project does, is able to move forward, we're not starting from ground zero, going looking for information. And I think, again, Jen did a good job of trying to clarify, that was the intent. It wasn't to, we know the, we know now the West Street Building Committee had been meeting. I think when we sent that letter, I don't know that that was on any of our radar, and I think there was some feeling that it might have been. So, really just to clarify the intent and make sure that we can continue to work with the Select Board, the town administrator, the Finance Committee, because whether it's now or down the road, the issues at the junior/senior high school aren't going anywhere, so, trying to get as much information on how we can address them as possible. So, I did just want to mention that.
And I will say, at the end of the meeting, I talked to a few of the Select Board members, and at least one of them straight out said that they appreciated the clarification, because they had read it, interpreted it, and then the conversation at the meeting skewed the thought. So, it, I think it was beneficial to go and just kind of put it out there, and we did have some good conversation, I think, about, like, we don't know what we don't know. So, kind of this all-knowing, you know, we point to it all this time, you, if we have this list, and I was like, if there's 127 things on there, then that's great. But, if we know that they're there, we can look for grants for those things, we can look for other things. You know, we, we all realize that pulling the trigger on a brand-new school for next door is like, pretty, pretty slim, right? Like, I hate to say that in this forum, but, we have to, we recognize and acknowledge that there's something that has to be done. So, let's look at different ways of trying to meet that agenda, and some, some of the reading that I've done, I'm sure someone will point out that I've misinterpreted or whatever, but if you have that kind of a planter list and you are working towards making your building ADA compliant, from the article that I read when I went down a rabbit hole one night, is if you're working towards that, you're not going to trip, and they're gonna be like, okay, you have to now complete that within 30 days of a project. They're like, they can say, all right, here's the list. So, if we did a project and it put it, it tripped that number, they can't hold it against us because we're working towards that, so we'd still be able to do some other projects, as I understand it. But, again, you know, we don't even know what that is. So, and there was some talk of that last night also, at the West Street meeting, so, people are aware. I thought we were gonna lose some people when they, when that money that had originally earmarked for the gym and the locker rooms. But, it, I, bottom line is, it was explained, explained pretty well. Although I personally don't agree with why they use the money, it makes sense in the overall, you know, the way they explained it made sense. So, it'll be something else that we'll have to work towards. And I'm sure that that's gonna come up, because there, I think there's ledges in the showers anyway, to keep the water for drain, so that wouldn't be ADA compliant anyway. Like, you'd probably have to go and, there's, I know it's South Hadley ran into that, like, their showers by the pool that need to be able to be wheelchair accessible, so, things like that. But it was, I think overall, it was a pretty positive, pretty positive meeting. Yeah. Anything, I just started stepping all over that, sorry about that.
No problem. Also, and I included, I don't know if it was last week or a couple of weeks ago, I included just a video for you all to reference. We are moving forward with a pilot program with a company called Ajax AIM. It's an active incident management system. And essentially, they use Google Maps and get a map of our building, and they're able to identify, it's an emergency response that we'll be able to push out to district-owned computers. People could certainly put it on their personal phones if they wanted, but with a couple of clicks, you can say, there's an issue, what the issue is, if you're safe where you are, and the app starts to consolidate all that information, and other people, teachers, dispatch, are gonna start to see green or red on the map to say, these areas are safe, or these areas are not. It is, it's pretty interesting, the, what you can do with it. You can have, you can chat with people through it, and then at the end, it produces like an after-action report immediately of everything that went in, who clicked what, who responded what. If it was a situation where the police department had to come into the building to clear spaces, police department will be able to radio to dispatch that the East Meadow Library is clear, and then the dispatch- And then the dispatch can mark it clear on the map. So as it's happening in real time, we'll be able to see if there was an incident. And it's not just about active shooters. Of course, that's something that we talk about when those issues come up. But fire alarms, fire drills, shelter and teach, any of those incidents, we've talked in our table tops before. There is a robbery at one of the banks in town. Like, we can go to that system. And once you start an alarm, basically, everybody at that school would receive the alarm, but they'd also have other information to accompany it. So we're really still in the early stages, but we are, we've, we're going to partner with them just to pilot it for the second half of the year. So David has been working with their technology folks. We've provided building maps. And basically, they're just getting up and running. They'll provide some additional training. And then we'll work with teachers and staff to get them up to date. And, you know, we've involved the fire chief, the police chief, our school resource officer, as we've kind of worked through the plan. And, you know, in the second half of the year, when we're doing something like a fire drill, we want to test this as well. And, you know, down the road, ultimately, we'll have to make a decision if it's something that we would purchase for our schools, or not. You know, and, you know, part of the reason the fire chief and police chief have been involved, as well, is they can go beyond just schools. You know, they partnered with hospitals in other parts of the country, town halls, state departments, things like that. So, so we're, it's interesting, and I'm, I don't know if excited is the right word, but I look forward to having it. And I think the one thing that we all saw by at least the second meeting that we had, it's like, we need to use this to see. It's great, it looks great on the computer, they do a good job of presenting it, but we need it in our hands and see if it functions as it appears. And fortunately, they were able to offer us a pilot. We'll be the first ones in Massachusetts to pilot this program. And the reason we found it was it's connected to the I Love You Guys Foundation, which we've done some work with, and they have the standard reunification method. So like, in the tagline, it had something that drew our attention to it. So that's kind of how we started to pursue it. And then the other thing Megan mentioned briefly, and rightfully so, because we don't have a ton of information on it right now. But the supplemental budget that was passed by the governor last week did include a $75 million package for districts related to that 14% increase from OSD last year. Unfortunately, the language in that bill does provide a list of winners and losers. There are some districts that will benefit from it, and other districts that will not benefit from it. I don't want to get people's hopes up. It does appear that we will benefit from it, potentially, but there's still some things that need to be ironed out. The information that came out late last night from DESI said, they're still ironing it out, but it sounds like they're going to use the circuit breaker process. And, I'm sorry, the emergency relief process. So it would come through circuit breaker. And that doesn't open until March, but they anticipate having some webinars on next steps and what districts need to do in early to mid-January. So once we have some more information, I'll certainly either share it here in an update. But there is the potential for some additional relief. I'm sure it won't be what the actual cost was, but, so. And that's all I have.
Any questions or comments? We're very quiet tonight, I feel like. All right, Todd, you're up.
Couple of things. So I uploaded the end-of-the-year report to the DESI portal yesterday, and received, well, it's like, emailed them that they have, that you have it. It's also sent to the town administrator for certification. So once he does that, we'll have Stephen and Jen sign off on it, and we'll send that in separately. And that process may result in some amendments and things like that through the end-of-the-year report system. The second thing, there was an alarm issue at this building over the weekend. Something with the phone system. We did have to bring in a technician on Sunday to be able to diagnose it and get it cleared up. We weren't getting proper notifications. The fire department brought it to our attention. So, but it has been resolved.
Was it Sunday night to Monday, or Saturday night to Sunday?
Saturday night.
Ah, it was Friday.
Friday night into Saturday.
I was going to say, was it during the storm?
Friday afternoon. An email went from the alarm company to the fire chief. Because essentially, they said they can't guarantee that the alarm will speak to dispatch, because they were seeing some errors pop up on their screen that we weren't receiving. So yeah, like Todd said, maintenance came in Saturday, worked on it, wasn't able to resolve it. We had talked about the potential for having to have Fire Watch starting Monday morning. But I did make the decision to say, if we can get the company here on Sunday, knowing that it might cost us, I would rather have our house in order and make sure that the building is safe for students to enter on Monday. And they were here at 7:30 or 8 o'clock on Sunday, and it was resolved probably by 9:30, 10:00. And the fire chief and I communicated probably around noon or 1 o'clock, and he confirmed that his crew had received the alarms when we sent the test, and he was satisfied with that. So we're still working with the company to kind of figure out some of what went on, but it was resolved, so.
No disruption in this school activity, so hopefully not now. And the last thing that I have is, on the 4th, Stephen and I along with the town administrator did the opening to the kitchen RFP. We had five PAC proposals brought in. Stephen and I will begin evaluating, make recommendations based on those proposals to move that project forward.
Excellent. Any questions for Todd? All right, Jill?
So we met with CES Wednesday, so the 6th. Went through the annual audit information. Because they're a business kind of corporation, they have to do kind of their own standalone, or have to go through a standalone audit process. Here's a review of the FY '24 budget. And then there was the annual report that was reviewed as well, in terms of like, programming and different information in terms of CES. I did put in our folder that whole annual report and the executive director's report too, that just kind of summarizes information. And the annual report lists all the information about programs and descriptions and things like that for everyone to see and look at after leisure.
Excellent. Any questions or comments for Jill? All right. Next is just anything that we want to make sure is on the agenda. When is our next, next meeting?
I believe it's the 9th?
24. Maybe we could put community relations with Glenn on there?
Yeah.
See if you can come, yeah.
See if we can make it to that meeting.
I think I'll be doing my mid-cycle review. If that makes sense. I know we talked about potentially keeping the final evaluation in May. I don't know if we made an official decision on that, but if that's the timeline, I'm going to try to have that for the 9th, at least. That way, people can put eyes on it. Whether it's at the 9th meeting, or people need to ask questions at the following meeting. But I'll try to have something, I'll put it on the agenda, and then have something in the folder for you.
And then we have the vote for Policy A. Anything else that anyone can think of at this point? So community relations with Glenn, so it would, it's the first meeting. So it would be a work, work group meeting, or subcommittee meeting. So we'll do community relations. Do you all need to meet for Policy? And then we should probably start with budget also. So we'll have 3?
Oh, 3.
Okay.
Yeah, I know we were given the next couple policies, like hard copies. And then I think MASC just pushed out an update for, I think, E something, as a potential to look at. So I just got that email, I think, yesterday.
Done.
Yeah. I don't know if that's one of the ones you gave us, but I was like, oh.
MASC giving updates.
I know.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, we'll vote to go into executive session. Vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A 3, "To discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session." Can you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Paulson?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Thanks, everybody.